Bueno, es día especial de sesión aquí en T-Rex Arms nuevamente. Y esperábamos que terminaríamos ya. El Senado, como hablamos en los streams de live anteriores, realmente limitó el alcance de lo que estaban tratando de hacer en la sesión especial. Y habían planeado... En realidad, obtuvieron el procedimiento de anuncio en su agenda para las 11 de la mañana. Pero en lugar de eso, a las 11 de la mañana de esta mañana se reunieron y lo cambiaron a un lunes. Así que esto está funcionando al menos hasta el lunes. Así que hay buenas noticias y malas noticias en eso. La mala noticia es que no estamos terminados. Y los contribuyentes de Tennessee van a continuar pagando $58,000 y más cada día que la gente está en la cumbre haciendo cosas. Y eso solo está en el per diem y la milla porque tienen su salario regular. Y luego la gente en la cumbre tiene su salario regular. Así que están pagando independientemente de si la sesión especial ocurre o no. Pero hay ese extra de $58,000 al día para que estén allí y hagan conversaciones sobre principalmente leyes de armas. Eso es lo que todos quieren que hagan. Eso es lo que la izquierda quiere que hagan, eso es lo que los medios quieren que hagan. Y es muy molesto ver parte de la cobertura. Y es muy molesto ver parte del debate y es muy molesto ver a los manifestantes. Porque, hemos hablado un poco de esto en el live stream de ayer, tuvimos una cantidad tremenda de leyes de armas malas propuestas por la gente. Se presentaron 100 leyes para la sesión especial, que suponía durar cuatro días. Obviamente, no vas a escuchar todas esas leyes en cuatro días. Obviamente, vas a tener un montón de ellos y vas a tratar de pasar algunos y pasar la sesión especial muy rápido. Pero lo que ha pasado es que los manifestantes han obtenido mucha atención de los medios. Afortunadamente, diría que los legisladores reales están escuchando a los manifestantes algo menos a medida que pasa el tiempo, por un par de razones. Número uno, es demasiado caliente por fuera para muchos de los manifestantes. Así que muchos de ellos ni siquiera aparecen más. Un montón de ellos apareció el lunes y hicieron cosas como crear cadenas humanas alrededor de la capital y cosas así. Pero es demasiado caliente para hacer eso el martes o el miércoles o hoy. Pero la otra cosa es que los manifestantes han sido realmente, realmente molestres. Y creo que eso en realidad se desfallece. Y da mucho más daño a su causa que ayuda a ella. Y muchas de las personas dentro de la legislatura también han sido mucho más molestres y probablemente da mucho más daño a su causa que ayuda a su causa. Y eso es porque muchas de las personas dentro de la legislatura estatal de Tennessee están allí no tanto para hacer el trabajo, sino para usar el trabajo como un piso de paso a la siguiente posición política que están buscando. Así que hay algunas personas allí que definitivamente son grandiosas. Y están tratando de crear un montón de material que... Lo verás en sus próximas anuncios de campaña para la próxima posición política, el próximo cargo que quieren correr. Así que todo tipo de cosas están pasando y todos quieren cosas diferentes de la sesión especial. Lo que es interesante es que muchos de los manifestantes están muy enojados con cómo va la sesión especial. Y llaman a esto un desastre y un desperdicio. Y estoy de acuerdo con ellos porque creo que también es un desastre y creo que también es un desperdicio. He hablado de por qué es un desperdicio. $58,000 al día parece desperdiciante. Y he hablado de por qué es un desastre porque no hay emergencia. Estamos estancadamente reunidos para lidiar con la emergencia de violencia de armas debido a un disparo que ocurrió en marzo. En abril, la legislatura de Tennessee dijo que esto no es realmente una emergencia. No vamos a pasar la legislación de emergencia en sesión. Vamos a abordarlo más tarde. Así que se están llamando de nuevo para abordar una emergencia que ya abordaron dos veces. Así que eso es un tipo de desastre. Pero aquí está lo que es interesante. Esto muestra los dos lados diferentes del espectro político aquí. Los manifestantes y yo estamos de acuerdo en que la sesión especial es un desastre y un desperdicio. Pero eso no nos hace más cercanos políticamente o ideológicamente. Y lo que significa es que los legisladores mismos están ahora en esta posición muy inenmi表able donde no van a complacer a nadie. Están en esta posición ahora donde es solo... Sí, no importa lo que hagan, van a ofender a la gente. Y creo que en algunos casos, para algunos de los legisladores, esa es una nueva posición. Eso no es justo. Estoy seguro de que saben que tienen constituidos que van a molestar con ellos si hacen esto y otros constituidos también van a molestar con ellos si hacen eso. Pero creo que esta es la primera vez donde están lidiando con personas que les joden y amenazan con sus vidas y amenazan con la vida de sus hijos, no importa lo que hagan. Creo que ahora están doliendo que en realidad no hay nada que puedan hacer para complacer a algunos de los manifestantes. No todos los manifestantes, pero algunos de los más específicos, diría, manifestantes políticos avanzados tienen un objetivo y un único objetivo en mente, que es el desarmamento total. Así que si entregan algo menos que eso o incluso cualquier cosa que sea incrementalmente en camino a eso, van a ser gritados y jodidos y llamados supremacistas y supremacistas blancas. Que, escuchamos mucho de eso. De hecho, replayamos un clip el último live stream. Repararemos algunos clips más sobre esto. Nos llamamos específicamente a Chris Todd, quien ha tenido alguna legislación de armas realmente excelente en el pasado. Alguno de ellos ha pasado, algunos de ellos han sido disparados porque era demasiado bueno, demasiado bueno para la dirección. Él tenía alguna buena legislación de armas que permitiría a los policías desempeñados poder llevar sus brazos de lado a las escuelas o simplemente estar en propiedad escolar. Estos son oficiales policiales desempeñados con sus armas de servicio. Actualmente, en el estado de Tennessee, no se les permite ir a la propiedad escolar con esas armas. Solo los SROs que han sido nombrados por los boardes escolares. Esos son los únicos oficiales policiales, oficiales de la policía legal que se les permite tener armas en propiedad escolar. Y incluso diferentes escuelas y diferentes jurisdicciones y boardes han establecido reglas diferentes para cómo esos... Es un tipo de complicado. Así que este ley que permite eso es simplemente lo peor. Lo peor que algunos de los manifestantes pueden imaginar. No están aquí para soluciones que protejan a los niños, como permitir que más gente esté alrededor de las escuelas con la única cosa que ha demostrado para detener los disparos escolares y los asesinos escolares. Solo quieren confiscación de armas, solo quieren reformas de armas. Así que ¿mostramos la imagen de que esta sesión es un desastre? Es un muy... sí. Políticamente, imaginaría que esa mujer y yo estamos en polos opuestos. Siento el dolor de la mujer. Nuestros sentimientos son iguales ahora mismo. Así que ese es el tipo de cosas que están pasando. Voy a tratar de prestar un poco más de atención al chat aquí. Quiero mostrar algunos de los clips de Chris Todd hablando del ley. Mostramos algunos clips de... ¿fue un subcomité que mostramos ayer? Es difícil mantener un seguimiento porque hay 100 leyes que se están hablando. Su ley pasó a un subcomité y los manifestantes fueron horrorizados y comenzaron a gritar "supremacistas blancos" porque eso es lo que pasa. Todo ha sido realmente flattado, todas las ideologías políticas, todos los objetivos, todo ha sido flattado en un solo plan unidimensional donde cualquier cosa que no te guste es supremacía blanca. Dejar que más policías tengan armas para proteger a los niños es supremacía blanca. Pero él también trajo esa ley. Una vez que salió del subcomité, esa ley fue al comité y repartiremos algunos clips de ahí. Noel está también ayudándome a mantener un oído por lo que está pasando en el piso ahora mismo en la Casa. Así que el Senado está fuera hasta el lunes. La Casa todavía está hablando de cosas y todavía está tratando de poner los tornillos al Senado y hacer que ellos escuchen más leyes. Así que veremos cómo va eso. Todo el mundo está en el chat aquí señalando que el chat es bastante tranquilo. La gente está pidiendo cinturones de hombro, solo sé paciente. Solo sé paciente. ¿Dónde está el nuevo cinturón de hombro? Sí, hay muchas preguntas sobre esto. La gente pregunta dónde está el AK-50. Quiero pester Brandon Herrera. Quiero hacer que esta idea funcione que terminar el AK-50 será uno de sus promesas de campaña. Así que eso sería algo bueno para que funcione. Si estás en las redes sociales y te sigues Brandon Herrera, quiero que exija esto como una promesa de campaña. Y es mucho más posible que la mayoría de las promesas de campaña que he oído en mi vida. Así que no quiero decir que soy escéptico del proyecto AK-50. Voy a decir que es extremadamente ambicioso y es una excelente promesa de campaña. ¿Qué pasa con el ATF tratando de restrictar las ventas privadas con su nueva regla? Sí, hay un montón de cosas del ATF que están hirviendo. La buena noticia es que todas las cosas anteriores que el ATF ha intentado hacer, en cuanto a reglas, han sido rechazadas completamente o parcialmente o principalmente. La decisión de Bruin que obtuvimos hace un año, ahora más de un año, no casi dos años ahora ha cambiado el panorama cuando se trata de leyes de control de armas. Pero hay otra que... ¿cuál era? West Virginia versus EPA. Eso cambia cómo las agencias reguladoras y de enfoque pueden aplicar reglas. Eso limita la cantidad de autoridad de reglas que tienen. Así que tenemos varios precedentes realmente buenos que van a clavarse un poco en el ATF. Ahora, eso todavía requiere que la gente los lleve a la cárcel. Todavía requiere que la gente realmente se rechaza. Eso es algo que tenemos como arma, aunque. Y esa es parte de la razón por la que los manifestantes están aquí en Tennessee ahora mismo. Me encantaría saber cuántos manifestantes en la cumbre son realmente de Tennessee. Y definitivamente hay unos relativos que sé que son de Tennessee y reconozco desde las interacciones anteriores. Así que tenemos gente de Tennessee real y tenemos verdaderos creyentes que realmente, realmente quieren esto. Y luego también tenemos a algunos personas pagas de la ciudad. Porque la cinta roja es la nueva frontera o la nueva línea de batalla. Es la nueva frente en la confiscación de armas. Porque no... tenemos un montón de leyes de la cinta roja. Ninguna de ellas aún ha sido desafiada legalmente. Y así es el nuevo plan de juego que estamos viendo. ¿Tienes clips, Noel, listos para ir? Repartamos un clip de Chris Todd porque él hizo algunos puntos excelentes sobre qué es el núcleo de la cuestión. Y luego la forma en que los manifestantes responden es el siguiente cosa que quiero cubrir aquí. ¡Llévenlo, equipo técnico!
Bueno, como bien sabes, hay un número de escuelas donde los gobiernos locales han elegido no proporcionar SROs y esto ciertamente va a ayudar a llenar ese vacío. Pero sobre los SROs tenemos administradores en las escuelas que literalmente nos piden esta habilidad. Tienen sus permisos de transporte mejorado y nos están pidiendo esta habilidad porque ven a estos niños vulnerables y quieren añadir protección a ellos junto con los SROs que están allí. Planifican coordinar eso. Tenemos oficiales retirados que nos piden esto. Tenemos oficiales actuales que nos piden esto sabiendo que están a punto de retirarse. Y quieren voluntariar. Quieren ser parte de una escuela que puede estar en su vecindario para que puedan proporcionar este seguro de seguridad sin costo alguno. No hay costo a esto en absoluto. Y esos son los miembros más confiados de nuestra comunidad. Así que esa es una de las razones por las que trajimos esto. No estoy seguro de que puedas oír todo eso con el mojismo y el gritos pasando, pero espero que lo puedas.
Sí, así que eso es Chris Todd. Iba a decir amigo del programa, pero no estoy seguro de que sabe que tenemos un programa. Pero es amigo de los propietarios de armas en Tennessee. Y lo has visto en algunos videos anteriores de T-Rex hablando de control de armas. Trabajó en 1735, que fue la ley para bajar la edad de la propiedad de arma de mano para... ¿Cuándo fue esto? ¿Fue hace dos años? Estábamos bajando la edad de la propiedad de arma de mano en Tennessee de 21 a 18. Fue parte de ese esfuerzo. Fue uno de los sponsors de esas leyes. Y no pudimos lograr que eso fuera aprobado. Pero luego la decisión de Bruin llegó. Había una demanda ejecutada por la Coalición de Política de Armas y algunos otros tipos que realmente obtuvieron, ya sabes, obtuvimos una orden de juicio de que era unconstitutional restribir a los 20 años y los 21 años de edad de propiedad de armas o a los 19 y los 20 años de edad de propiedad de armas. Eso era unconstitutional y así pueden ahora, gracias a una decisión de la corte, no una legislación realmente exitosa. Así que como señaló, tiene un plan y una solución para proteger a los niños en las escuelas. Especialmente en las pequeñas escuelas que no tienen toneladas de recursos, donde los niños son especialmente en riesgo. Y luego creo que tienes un clip de Balsam también.
Gracias, señor presidente, y gracias al sponsor por traer esta ley. Ya sabes, esta ley realmente resuelve y responde una pregunta, que es: ¿Es prudente tener una respuesta armada en la escuela para proteger a los niños y el personal en caso de un disparo activo? La ley obviamente responde esa pregunta en la afirmativa. Y me parece que hay un fuerte apoyo histórico para ese resultado. Piensa en los miembros de 2018. Tuvimos un horrendo disparo en la escuela de high school de Marjory Douglas Stone en Parkland, Florida, que todos recuerdan muy vivamente. En ese caso en particular, el disparador, dentro de los primeros 99 segundos antes de que llegara una respuesta armada, disparó a 21 personas. Eso es lo que pasó en 2018 en Parkland, Florida. En 2022, todos también recuerdan, miembros, ese horrendo disparo en la escuela de Rob Elementary en Uvalde, Texas. En ese caso, dentro de los primeros tres minutos, el disparador había sacado 100 balas 100 balas dirigidas a los niños y al personal. Y así, tan tanto como queremos hacer cosas como lo que ha hecho el representante Gant y crear un sistema de despacho directo de pánico y alarma para llevar a la policía a las escuelas tan rápido como sea posible, lo que la historia nos dice es que necesitamos una respuesta armada en lugar de la escuela para proteger a los niños debido a cómo rápido empiezan a volar estas balas.
Sí, así que otra excelente explicación de por qué esto realmente sería útil, por qué esto realmente sería una solución al problema que se está discutiendo, por qué esto realmente sería una solución para la violencia de armas, por qué esto realmente aumentaría la seguridad pública, por qué esto realmente haría las cosas que estamos tratando de hacer con la sesión especial. Y veamos qué es la respuesta a esta ley que se votó.
Gracias, señor presidente. Llamo a la pregunta anterior.
Viste nuestros manos arriba. Teníamos nuestras manos arriba desde el principio. Teníamos nuestras manos arriba desde el principio de este comité. Teníamos nuestras manos arriba. Eso es... Viste nuestras manos arriba. Viste nuestras manos arriba. ¿Podrías...? Teníamos nuestras manos arriba.
¿Podrías dejar...?
Teníamos nuestras manos arriba desde el principio.
¿Dejarías que el presidente hablara sin levantarnos? Hicimos muy bien. Bueno, lo siento.
Te llamaste cuando nuestras manos estaban arriba. Nuestras manos estaban arriba desde el principio.
Se sentó...
Este comité está fuera de orden.
Y el presidente hará el llamado. Representante Warner, ¿quieres que le haga la pregunta a este punto?
Sí, señor, lo hago.
Lo reconociste cuando nuestras manos estaban arriba. Mark, el presidente, viste nuestras manos arriba.
No.
Tengo mi mano arriba desde el principio. Fui el primero en levantar mi mano. Y te dije porque sabíamos los juegos que jugabas. Sabíamos que jugabas estos juegos. No seas cobarde, hagamos la discusión, hay gente que ha estado esperando esta ley.
Señor, solo hay un presidente. Escucha. La pregunta fue llamada, es un procedimiento parlamentario.
Lo reconociste.
Está bien, estaba en la lista.
Mi mano no estaba antes de su.
Reconoces tu punto de orden y luego vamos adelante. Vaya.
Señor presidente, con todo respeto, eso es un crachate. Teníamos nuestras manos arriba cuando llamamos la motion. Te miraste y reconociste. Te dije por qué nuestras manos estaban arriba, porque queríamos derrocar esta llamada de la pregunta. Colleen me miró y se levantó también. Y luego te llamaron a todos los demás excepto nosotros dos. Eso es incorrecto y es irrespectivo y muy diferente a lo que normalmente...
Tengo una lista.
Pero déjame terminar mi punto de orden, señor presidente. Si quieres llevar esta ley y tirarla por la garganta de todos y por la garganta de estas personas, estás haciendo exactamente eso y eso es incorrecto.
No tienes idea de cómo vamos a votar.
Viste nuestras manos, Mark.
Representante Warner, ¿permitirías una discusión y retirar tu llamada a este punto? Tenemos que obedecer a las reglas y te estoy pidiendo que retires tu llamada a la pregunta. Y déjennos tener una discusión sobre esto.
Señor presidente, hace tres leyes, el representante Parkinson se levantó y le hizo la pregunta, lo primero.
Vaya, termina.
No, no rechazaré. No sacaré mi llamada a la pregunta. Vamos a votar.
Vaya. Le pediría a la audiencia que se sente. Este es un procedimiento parlamentario. No hacemos nada cuando la gente habla fuera de orden y grita. Tenemos un proceso. Representante Parkinson, tengo una lista aquí. Él estaba en la lista primero, luego Jones, McKenzie, Parkinson, Sopicki y Balsam. Lo siento. Señor, señor.
Levantamos nuestras manos.
No voy a ponerle eso con esa acusación.
Tú eres mi colega, tú no eres mi jefe, así que veamos nosotros mismos rápido. Vamos.
Fuera de orden.
Puedes deshacerme con estos guardias de seguridad, pero voy a hablar. No estoy saliendo. Soy miembro de este comité, así que puedes deshacerme. No, este comité está fuera de orden, el presidente está fuera de orden.
Estamos en una recesión de cinco minutos.
Los de distrito 52 están siendo silenciados. Los de distrito 2 están siendo silenciados.
Así que entiendes la idea. Ahora, para ser justos, la gente está diciendo aquí que estaban esperando. Querían ver el final del clip cuando él arroja el gavillo. No arroja en realidad el gavillo. También hay gente en el chat diciéndome que necesito correr por el cargo. ¿No viste el clip? Hubiera arrojado el gavillo y es por eso que no estoy corriendo por el cargo. Pero soy muy simpatizante con esos tipos porque han estado bajo una gran presión de todos. Jones no está ayudando. Realmente me gusta Parkinson normalmente. Siento que está en su último nervio porque son sus personas que lo ven mal y está tratando de ayudarlos, pero sí, siento por esos tipos. Y no tanto por Jones. Ahora, parece que estamos poniendo a Jones mucho. Es un representante, así que es el 1% de la Casa. Y aparece en nuestros clips mucho. Y también ha reclamado un montón. Muchas de las entrevistas con él recientemente, con la prensa mainstream, han sido que él no está herido. Es lo mismo que él estaba diciendo allí, que no está herido. Cada vez que cortamos live a la Casa, no estamos escogiendo clips de él. Él es todo el tiempo. Es el 1% de la Casa. Quiere el 90% de la hora de aire. Está obteniendo alrededor de 50 y está reclamando que no le da tanto como quiere. Eso es realmente lo que parece en este punto. Es un tipo de increíble. Y luego Justin Pearson es similar pero más tranquilo, aunque hubo un momento divertido anoche donde él fue... No hay manera de decirlo corta. Su acento es falso. Tiene un acento falso. Y cuando se molesta realmente, su acento falso se desaparece. Así que eso pasó anoche. Podías ver que realmente, realmente estaba en un estado de estado. Así que sí, eso fue... eso fue interesante. Así que los manifestantes han estado arrojando tantras. Algunas de las personas en estos comités también han estado arrojando tantras. Y ha habido esta idea que las reglas, las reglas más restrictivas que han sido puestas en place para la sesión especial para que puedan hacer más, son el fin de la democracia. Sabes, tener reglas significa que no puedes llegar a tu manera y es solo un paso en el camino al fascismo. Y no estoy exagerando para efecto cómico. Estos son los tipos de cosas que están por todo el Twitter. ¿Tenías otro clip para seguir, Noel, o quieres mostrar el traje ahora? Así que hay gente que afirma que están siendo silenciados. No quiero poner a todos en un paquete. Pero lo cool sobre este traje que estamos a punto de mostrar es que te mostrará que hay un montón de personas que se están poniendo en un paquete. Así que si miras este traje aquí, para aquellos de ustedes que están escuchando en audio, dice: ¿Qué queremos? El poder. ¿Cuándo lo queremos? Ahora. ¿Cómo lo obtenemos? Noel, en la parte inferior de ese traje, puedes ver un montón de organizaciones que están en esto juntos, las personas que hicieron ese traje. Y un número de personas están señalando que Memphis... Así que hay un grupo político llamado Memphis for All. No estoy realmente seguro de lo que significan. ¿Significan que quieren la ciudad de Memphis y todo lo que eso implica para todos? ¿O significan que todos los que viven en Memphis deberían tener algún sayo en cómo se rune Memphis? Voy a suponer que significan ese último, pero suena como... Suena como si estuvieran tratando de imponer Memphis a todos cuando aparecen. Pero también puedes ver algunos otros grupos allí. Hay Everytown, por supuesto. Ese es un muy obvio que esperarías. Pero también hay Planned Parenthood. Ahora, si conoces algo sobre Planned Parenthood... Oh, no es Everytown, es Mom's Demand Action, ¿verdad? Sí. Son un tipo de lo mismo. Se runan por algunas de las mismas personas, reciben su dinero de las mismas personas. Everytown, Mom's Demand Action, muy similares. Pero Mom's Demand Action ha sido más activo aquí en Tennessee. Hay una brigada local de gente. Cada ciudad ha gastado mucho dinero. Cada ciudad gastó $100,000 en anuncios que principalmente pusieron en Nashville hace unas semanas en preparación para esto. Pero podrías estar preguntándote a ti mismo, si eres una persona lógica, ¿qué tiene que ver Planned Parenthood con Mom's Demand Action? Porque aunque el nombre de Planned Parenthood tiene "parente" en él, lo principal que hacen es detener a la gente de ser padres. Así que supierías que Planned Parenthood y Mom's Demand Action no estarían en la misma página o estarían en el mismo t-shirt pidiendo poder y diciendo que van a tomar el poder. Así que hablemos un poco sobre el espectro, es la palabra equivocada. No hay un espectro político en sí. Pero hay muchos grupos de la izquierda que tienen cosas específicas que quieren lograr. Y hacen un trabajo muy bueno de reunirse en la misma página y aparecer en los mismos problemas juntos. No hay razón para que Planned Parenthood esté en la cumbre ahora mismo lobblando por el control de armas. Planned Parenthood gana su dinero matando a los niños. Así que no les importa cuando los niños se matan en las escuelas, ¿verdad? Esa es la obvia inferencia lógica aquí. Pero Planned Parenthood obtiene alrededor del 45% de su dinero del gobierno. Y Planned Parenthood quiere tener más poder. Y quieren más dinero del gobierno y quieren un gobierno mayor. Y otros grupos que quieren un gobierno mayor y más dinero del gobierno y más de un color político específico y dirección para salir se reúnen con grupos que tienen deseos realmente similares. Y eso justo ahí es lo que todos tienen en común. Así que, si están hablando de derechos reproductivos, que es lo que llaman matar bebés, o reforma de armas, que es lo que llaman confiscación de armas, o varias otras cosas relacionadas con derechos trans, varias otras cosas que aparentemente no tienen nada en común, en realidad tienen un resultado final que realmente los une. Esta idea de que el gobierno tendrá más poder, el gobierno tendrá más autoridad y la gente tendrá menos libertad. Eso es algo que es realmente fascinante, es realmente fascinante para mí. La forma en que esto se desarrolló es interesante. Y es solo divertido encontrar ese traje en particular. Todos estos diferentes grupos. Si vas a todos los sitios web de estos diferentes grupos y miras todas las cosas diferentes que quieren, no hay una tonelada de overlap. Pero el traje dice lo que quieren. Quieren poder. Todos esos grupos quieren poder. Y todos esos grupos están afiliados con el gobierno lo suficiente que más poder del gobierno se convierte en más poder para ellos. Quieren poder y quieren simplemente tomarlo. Por eso están arrojando tantras en Nashville ahora mismo. Así que la gente sigue diciéndome que corra por el Congreso, no voy a hacerlo. Brandon Herrera lo hará por mí. Él será mi representante de San Antonio. Y realmente me gustan los dos representantes que tenemos en este distrito aquí. Y realmente me gusta nuestro senador, Kerry Roberts. No hemos mencionado a Kerry Roberts antes en los últimos live streams, pero he conocido a Kerry Roberts durante mucho tiempo y he sido muy impresionado con las cosas que ha estado haciendo. Así que sí, creo que es bueno. Mucha gente comentando arrojando el gavilo. Sí. Solo no dejes que él arroje cuando está enojado. Sí, si pudieramos, ya sabes, arrojar el gavilo, recuperarlo. Quien posee este gavilo tiene todos los poderes del presidente de... ¿Qué comité fue? Ese fue un comité completo, sí. La otra cosa que es un tipo de interesante sobre este tema en particular. Grupos conservadores necesitan mejorar en trabajar juntos. Cuando hay un problema como el grande y fuso que es esta particular sesión especial, violencia de armas, seguridad pública y salud mental, no son solo los dos grupos que deben aparecer y ser parte de esto. La gente que está interesada en el libre discurso debe aparecer y ser parte de esta conversación. La gente que está interesada en el derecho a la privacidad debe aparecer y ser parte de esta conversación. La gente que está interesada en la educación de la escuela y la libertad de educación debe aparecer y ser parte de esta conversación porque las decisiones que la gente quiere tomar sobre estos temas van a impactar todas esas cosas y en una manera negativa porque la gente que quiere tomar poder son las que quieren restricciones mayores y más grandes sobre todas esas cosas diferentes. Algunas de las leyes que hablan de salud mental, no hemos tenido la oportunidad de pasar por un montón de leyes porque, de nuevo... a whole lot of bills, because again, there are 100 bills that are filed, and some of those have been tabled. Most of them have been tabled in the Senate. Some of them are still being discussed in the House. Some of those bills have massive privacy implications. Some of those bills have massive educational implications. Some of those have massive freedom implications outside of weapon confiscation. Some of the safe storage bills don't make it clear whether or not people can just come into your house whenever they want to find out if your guns are locked up. There are massive freedom implications in some of these poorly thought-out bills that are being ramrodded through the special session. Now, the good news is, it seems like things have stalled, and it seems like people are getting pretty tired of the constant interruptions from the protesters. I think that is all working in freedom's favor. But what is frustrating now is that there is so much conflict going on between leadership. There are a number of people that have their own personal agendas in Nashville. They have specific bills that they want to pass for their own personal reasons, and now they're kind of at loggerheads. And I don't think they're being driven by political pressure. I don't think they're being deliberately steered about by the governor. The governor hasn't even showed up. Apparently, he's not in the county, which, given all this going on, is probably a wise move on his part. But calling the special session was not a wise move. Again, special sessions are for actual real emergencies, and then you do a real small amount of stuff that's required for an emergency. You don't just ramrod stuff through because the care and the due diligence is really, really important. So, let's take a quick break to talk about the chat here. Are there any questions? Ryan, you're keeping an eye on the chat. Anything in particular that we should talk about? People talk about building their own 43X pistols. This is good. This is good. That is a good thing. I have a 43X. You should definitely get the one with the rail, because you're going to want to put a light on it at some point. And you should put a threaded barrel on it. It's useful. A lot of the questions, a lot of the questions that are coming up inside of, not so much the chat, but inside of some of these committee conversations, show that the questioners don't really know how things work. And when I say things, I don't just mean guns. It's not just that they don't know how guns work, but oftentimes, they're commenting on an SRO bill. They don't know how SROs work, they don't know how schools work, they don't know how school boards work, they don't know how law enforcement works, and then they also don't know how guns work. And so what happens is, this is part of the reason you want the due process. There's a whole bunch of people on Capitol Hill that don't know how things work outside of Capitol Hill because they're very focused on their jobs. Are they, is it fair to call them bureaucrats, Noel? Some of them are good bureaucrats. Were you a bureaucrat when you were there?
The good guy.
I see why you got ahead of that there. Also, later on in the chat, we are going to introduce Noel. You've heard from Noel, and Noel has helped tremendously on these chats, on the livestreams, so Noel will appear before you, and she'll have a microphone so she can talk. But the fascinating thing is that when you get really, really focused on doing a job on Capitol Hill, you're, you're really isolated from the real world. And when you have regular session, and you have bills that will take days and days in between each committee hearing, and they're reported on in a, I would say, more normal way by the media, people who are in the real world and have context, and have information about how these things work, have the time to actually get in there and be part of some of those conversations instead of just random politicians and bureaucrats trying to remember about another bill that they read about SROs, and a study they read that said that minority children shouldn't have to see cops because it's triggering for them, and that's why we shouldn't have SROs inside of schools. That was, that was actually the only reason, the only reason I could come up with why they were yelling that Chris Todd was a white supremacist. Apparently, it's because seeing cops is something that only white supremacists want to do. White supremacists apparently love cops. They, they really want cops to show up when they're doing their, their white supremacist activities, I think, I guess. Yeah. So, yeah. And part of the problem with the 21st century in general is a lot of us are very isolated from the real world. It's really easy for us to see parts of the real world through our phones, on social media, and have a job that is really compartmentalized from other things, and when was the last time you were on a farm? When was the last time you watched somebody milking a cow? When was the last time you watched a video of somebody milking a cow? Now, do you have some really good points to make to the legislature about regulations on agricultural stuff? Probably not. So that's why the longer procedure actually allows for better information to go into making some of these decisions. But one of the things that the freedom-minded community should really work on is getting together and working together on some of these issues. I may not be an agricultural expert, but I want freedom and less government involvement, so I should totally help out our local agricultural boards when that is what they are trying to do. And then I would learn more about the agricultural stuff, and they would have the support of me when we actually want to do legislative stuff. So, that is the homework assignment for you guys. Really think about how you can do this stuff. If you want limited government, if you want smaller government, if you want government to have a jurisdiction that is not allowed out of, as our founding fathers intended, and as the Constitution very clearly lays out, and if you have seen some governmental overreaches in your time, and you think that it's a pretty poor idea, then you should be willing to not just talk about Second Amendment stuff, but the other amendments. And you should hang out with not just gun people, but with agricultural freedom people, and educational freedom people, and some of the other freedom people. Now, some of the other freedom people are weird, but isn't our diversity our strength or something like that? One of the things that's so fascinating to me about the "diversity is our strength" people, on the back of that t-shirt, they have totally aligned themselves around a single issue, which is wanting power and taking power. So that allows them to overcome some of the difficulties of having too much diversity. Really narrow it down to a single issue, and then just go, go after it. Do we have any other clips, Noel? Or is there anything else that we want to try to, try to cover? Talking about how we should get more involved? Or is anything happening on the floor? I can tell you right now, if Dustin Jones hasn't been expelled... It could very well happen.
He has already asked when the right time in the order of business is to call for a no-confidence vote for our speaker. That was how we started the session.
Here's the fascinating thing. He wants a no-confidence vote in the speaker. I would love a no-confidence vote in the speaker. Now, maybe not tonight, but my confidence in the speaker is pretty low, just like Justin Jones's confidence, but for totally different reasons. And I would actually like to fix some of the issues inside the Tennessee State Legislature, which I don't think is what Justin Jones is trying to do. I think that this is just another plan, scheme. I don't mean to pick on Justin Jones, but I do want to point out that this is kind of his whole shtick. The way, the only trick that he really has is the victim card, and that's really the only card that he has ever played. His star really rose when he got expelled, expelled or removed? What was the actual official term? Expelled from the legislature in April for disobeying a bunch of the rules. And expelling him was actually probably the wrong move because he was immediately reappointed by the city council where he's from, and everyone knew that that was going to happen, so expelling him, all it did was make a martyr out of him, and then none of the consequences of being a martyr. So that has been something that he did. But even before that, who, he's throwing milkshakes at a lot of people. What was his most successful milkshake assault? That really launched him into prominence?
Yeah, I actually think he entered the Tennessee activism stage in 2019. It was the first year. I was up there too.
I should give you your microphone now, if you're going to tell the story.
Yes.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to introduce you to Noel, former good bureaucrat, and currently friend of the show, and someone who has, someone who has helped on a bunch of projects, but has helped a ton on the political side, and helped a ton on this particular trilogy of livestreams that we have just done. But you can hold the microphone, or pin it on wherever you feel comfortable doing. You can hold it like a tiny... I can find you the little, the little dead cat if you would like.
No, but greetings to T-Rex YouTube. Is it on or not?
My apologies. Forgot to turn this one on. You should just say hi.
Hello, hello. Hi, T-Rex YouTube. I feel like I should manage expectations by saying I also know nothing about the new chest rig. Just, just to kind of set expectations from the beginning.
That is, that is, that is true. The chest rig information is going to be pretty, pretty limited from Noel.
A little bit about politics, but nothing about the new chest rig, so.
So Justin Jones got his start by throwing a milkshake at someone, and not just anybody.
It happened to be the Speaker of the House that year.
It happened to be the Speaker of the House. It happened to be one of the only people that had protection, one of the only people who was actually protected by Highway Patrol. So he chose a target that would get him arrested in the most public way possible so that he could be a victim, so.
Yes, and it, it initially didn't work out very well for him because he was banned from the State House after that, and assault charges were pressed, but the DA of Nashville seems to have a soft spot for Justin, so nothing ever came of that.
Very annoying that nothing ever came of that. I did see a funny quote on Twitter. Somebody was mocking him and saying he couldn't hold down a job at Dairy Queen, which I don't think he could, but not only because of the milkshake thing. But, yeah, he, he rose to some level of prominence basically playing the victim card, claiming that he had been persecuted by the Republicans, even though he picked the one guy that you get arrested for throwing a milkshake at, to throw a milkshake at, and he waited until the cameras were there. So, that's totally on you. And then the same thing in April. When tensions were highest and emotion was highest, that was when he did the bullhorn gag. So, all of this he has brought on himself pretty carefully, and I would say in some ways, bravo, Justin Jones. His timing is pretty, pretty impeccable, and he has dealt himself many victim cards to play. And now Eric Holder is apparently going to bad for him, so he's, yeah. So, we will see Justin Jones around. This is one of these things where I feel like he doesn't really deserve as much attention as we're giving him, but I think he'll be around for a while, so just keep your eye out for Justin Jones. He is indeed a rising star.
Yes, and I think at this point, every state has their career activists, but he just happens to be ours, so, yeah, we get to talk about him.
And this is, this is not a new trend. We've always had, we've always had this kind of political activism, we've always had these kinds of political protesters, we've always had issues with heightened emotions, and we've always had some level of, I mean, we've, we've had terrorism in this country as a political mechanism, so milkshakes is not that big a deal. But I do think that here in Tennessee, this is a little bit of a new thing. I think that a lot of our reps are not quite sure what to do with a guy like Justin Jones. He is, he's very much a, a political operative type. He is not a public servant type, and they don't really know what to do with him. And then the same thing is true with a lot of the protesters, and the things that the protesters are saying and doing, I am positive that they've seen this kind of thing on Fox News or CNN in DC, but I don't know that they were ready for it to happen to them inside of their State House. But this is something that they do need to be ready for, and you guys need to be ready for, and you need to be getting your, need to be getting your own local reps ready for this kind of thing. This is the way that people take power now. This is the playbook that people are following. Now, the good news is, I don't think the playbook is going super well in Tennessee. Like, people are not exactly rolling over and bending the knee the way that they anticipated, but special session is still going, and the Senate will reconvene on Monday, so we will still see what happens.
Yeah, I would like to think that people are catching on. I really think this spring was kind of a low point in a lot of ways for the Tennessee General Assembly. I don't think they'd ever seen that level of protest, and unfortunately, we know from leaked audio of a Republican caucus meeting that it actually had their caucus all turning on each other and just really, like, very scared and angry that they were being called all these horrible names. Again, relatively new for Tennessee, and I think their first response was to turn on each other, which was really sad. But I think as time goes on, they'll be more prepared, and I think honestly, the more they read up on the conflict theory playbook, it's just going to be easier to realize, you know, it's anymore, in the conflict theory framework, it's not really about what you do. Your individual actions actually don't matter. It's really about who you are, so you, yeah.
Oh, that's an excellent point, yes.
Yeah, all sorts of horrible things without any individual events.
And we're seeing that play out with, with Donald Trump. At this point, it doesn't matter what Donald Trump does, it's who he is that matters. He is Donald Trump, so nothing that he does can be good. Even when Donald Trump was going after the guns, and he has that famous quote, "Take the guns first and do the due process second," liberals did not like that. That is exactly what liberals want to do. That is exactly what red flag laws are. But Donald Trump can't do that because he's Donald Trump. Donald Trump can't be applauded for anything good because of who he is. And that's why when people were attacking Chris Todd for wanting to improve the security of the schools to protect children, he was called a white supremacist. Because if Chris Todd is a white supremacist, it doesn't matter what he does, it just matters that he's a white supremacist. But, I mean, the, the problem with a lot of these different things is, all the meanings of those words just kind of go away. Like, when people started calling Donald Trump a racist at the beginning of his campaign, it kind of stung a little, and now I don't think anyone just, he doesn't bat an eye, I don't think anybody bats an eye about this anymore, so.
It's kind of like taken the meaning out of the word anymore, which is honestly a shame, because it's a real idea, it's a real concept, but anymore, yeah, it's kind of just an empty insult.
Yeah, I was thinking of the Darth Vader quote. "That name no longer has any meaning." So, don't have to listen to it when people say that anymore. It's kind of crazy. Yeah, so there's a bunch of people watching, and we have some time left. So, let me tell you real quickly what the plan is. The plan is not to have another livestream tomorrow unless something crazy happens, which is always possible. We should keep an eye on the local Dairy Queens and see if Justin Jones is arming himself for action.
I saw something about a Dairy Queen holster in the chat. Excellent.
The milkshake ready rig? Okay, so this could have been a really cool chest rig joke if we've thought about it ahead of time, but this is just one of those things that, that makes itself happen. So one of the things that, that we will do is continue to keep a close eye on what is going on, but I, I actually think, you should, you should tell me what you think, Noel, because you have not only worked there, but you have worked there during previous special sessions. My sense is that stuff will, important stuff that helps us predict what is going on is not going to happen in front of the cameras quite as much anymore. This has kind of moved to back rooms a little bit.
Honestly, I didn't really think special sessions could get much worse than the last couple I was part of, but this one is actually proving me wrong in a whole new way. The standoff, and particularly the fact that it's sort of ending not with a bang, but with a whimper at this point, like, the Senate has gone home, hopefully with their feet up and their comfortable slippers, and the House is, it's just trucking to the bitter end.
Bringing this on themselves, so I am a little less sympathetic, but it's, looks terrible, yeah.
Yeah, and it's hard to understand at this point how, yeah, like, it's going to end well for anybody. Like Isaac mentioned before, everyone's frustrated and tired and angry and hot and a lot of things.
And nobody can please anybody. They're not giving the governor what he wants, they're not giving the protesters what they want, they're not giving real conservatives what they want, they're burning all of the emotional trust that they have with one another at this point, and all of these clips are going to come into play in the next elections, so... Oh, you know, I do think that Justin Jones might be winning.
Just in terms of airtime, I think if it was about airtime.
If it was about airtime, he is winning, but he's still not getting what he wants.
Seconds on the clock, he's got the most seconds on the clock. But, I honestly, after sitting here for three days and discussing and watching and noting what's happened, honestly, it would be kind of fun if we could end this maybe with just some constructive thoughts on political involvement. What do you think about that?
We will end this episode on constructive thoughts. Things that you guys can be doing in your own states, and we will update you when something that matters happens. So when the special session is finally well and truly over, or something really climactic happens, or there is a massive blizzard battle in the Senate chambers or something like that, you thought the ostrich eggs were bad. I just had an amazing idea. We will, we will keep you updated, but let's plan on no livestream for tomorrow, and we will keep you posted on what happens, and we will, we will bring you closure when it finally, if it finally arrives. But, yeah, let's, let's talk about what is positive. So, a couple of things that we're very positive about this special session. Conservatives did get engaged. A number of new organizations popped up and got organized, and that is excellent. And then you guys contributed to, mostly those of you in Tennessee, but you contributed a lot of emails. We sent, I think around 1,200 emails, 12,000 emails rather, to two reps together. So that is something that I think had a pretty... So that is something that I think had a pretty significant effect. But what are some of the other things that you wanted to mention?
Well, I know there were some questions in the chat about, you know, what's the best thing you can do for 2A right now and just significant, meaningful action. And I think it's kind of neat to be able to say, like, after spending a few years as staff in the Tennessee State House, that there's absolutely a way that you can be effective. But I think one of the things that can be difficult to hear right now is that it does take time, because often, you know, politics is the most exciting or frustrating in the moment, when there is a special session happening, that present moment, and, you know, we're trying to affect what's happening. But honestly, I would say T-Rex is in a position to actually have some influence because of things that were set in motion, you know, a year ago, two years ago, three years ago. So the fact that, but it's good that, you know, if you're paying, if we're paying attention now, that's really a good start. But a lot of political involvement actually starts really when you just get to know your rep or senator. And I was gonna tell a story on Toby if I can.
You can. Maybe you shouldn't mention his name.
Okay, I already did, oops.
Maybe you shouldn't mention who else is in the story.
That was definitely a pen name. But yeah, so what Isaac was saying earlier about how even just average normal people can be super helpful was, I found to be true back in my first year in the State House because I, both my boss and I were new and we were getting to know the code, Tennessee Code, which is very extensive, as you've mentioned. And one day, someone, just a random, very energetic, fast-walking citizen walked into our office and handed us a list. It was his Christmas wish list of gun legislation.
Yeah. And you guys can all be writing those kind of wish lists and you guys can all be taking those to your reps. Not only is that allowed, but a lot of times that is appreciated.
Yes, because a representative cannot be an expert on every issue. And so we ended up relying so heavily on citizens to, that knew the code better than we did in our office, especially the first year we were there, to tell us what is, you know, currently in statute, what are the best changes that need to be made to protect firearm rights in this particular state. And every state is gonna have a very different, like, when it comes to the technicalities of what's in the code, how the laws are written. So that is actually something, there's a place for really everybody to do something. And you may be the person making phone calls, or you may be the person who loves history and, like Isaac did, could give testimony on gun rights and the history of gun rights for that Oregon, Oregon case.
Yeah, that was interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, not only are you gonna have specific strengths that other people don't have, but also just every pair of hands, every pair of eyes watching and researching. And having conversations with people and just building relationships is huge. That is the other thing that I think a number of people have asked about T-Rex, how is it that we got involved and engaged in this? And when was it that David went to the Hill? Was that 19?
2019.
Yeah, so just starting to have relationships with people in 2019 means that now, four years later, we have a little bit of a track record. And these are not people that we see all the time, but we have now seen them over and over and over again, in good times and in bad. When gun bills were in favor because the governor was passing something like constitutional carry and calling it constitutional carry. And then also when gun laws are out of favor, when the governor would like to pass red flag laws and maybe or maybe not call them red flag laws, so, yeah.
Yeah, and I would say even in blue states, I'm sure it's so hard to be in a blue state right now and always has been, but I, there's usually one or two, or maybe even three conservative reps or senators that could really use your encouragement. And they in turn can give you some pretty interesting intel into your state and how it's, what's happening kind of in the hive and how it works.
Yeah, for sure. There's, I would say especially in some of those blue states, if you have three conservatives that are utterly and completely outnumbered by the far left, they need a lot of encouragement and a lot of support. But even in Tennessee, I feel like we have a few hardcore conservatives, we have some left conservative guys, we have some rhinos, and then we have a few Democrats who are on the far left. So there is a lot of opportunity in both supermajority situations on the right and supermajority situations on the left to give support to guys who really need it. Like, Chris Todd right now really needs support because he is getting hammered by the mainstream press for being a white supremacist because he wanted to protect kids. So that is right there, somebody that could do with a phone call or an email tonight even, so, yeah. Did you want to actually tell people to do that?
I would love to, really, because...
I think you have his phone number in there.
Yeah, from talking to some of the LAs down there, legislative assistants, they're, it's a rough time for them right now. And I know that Chris Todd particularly, after sponsoring the SRO bill and getting so much heat for that, could use just a note of encouragement. And his email address, which we can also probably drop into the chat, is rep.chris.todd@capitaltn.gov, capital dot tn.gov. And then his office number is 615-741-7475. So, yeah, he could use a little bit of encouragement right now.
Yeah, he, it's very frustrating. And he's one of these guys, he's just a super nice guy. He probably isn't used to having people scream at him the way that he has this week. He probably is not used to being called a white supremacist all the time. If you're on the internet a lot, being called a white supremacist just means that it is Tuesday. But for these guys, it is not entirely new, but it's certainly, it's certainly very hard to deal with that level of attention, so, yeah. So those are some things that we could do immediately. What are some of the other things that people should get ready to do? A lot of this stuff is, it is a bit of a process. I would say, are you part of the local chat that's talking about the chicken, the chickens in Dixon?
No.
Okay, well, you should get a part of that chat. There is, I'm part of several chats, some of which are talking about special sessions, some of which are talking about Brandon Herrera, some of which are talking about national stuff, and then Dixon County is about to ban chickens inside of city limits. But this is, this is why you need to be involved, not just at the high levels, but at your really low levels. There are a whole bunch of things that you can get involved with in your city council or your county commissioners level. And those are the guys who often go on to become state reps. So that is the place where you need to get to know these people. It's important that you get to know the people who are on the Hill now, but what's more important is that you get to know the people who are going to be there in the future. Build relationships with the people who are gonna be running for office so that you're not getting involved at the ballot stage, where you look at the ballot and you vote for whichever R is on the top, or whichever R you've heard of before. If you actually know these people ahead of time, you've actually seen guys like Chris Todd prove themselves and you know that you can actually support them, as opposed to just taking a gamble on all the guys from your county. So get involved at that low level. Don't despise the day of small beginnings and be faithful in those really tiny little things, because they end up, they end up mattering. Little tiny companies like T-Rex turn into slightly less tiny companies. And some of the guys that we worked with four or five years ago are now in Nashville and they're involved in this whole mess, so, yeah. So get started now, because this is where the ball really starts rolling. And don't immediately try to jump into a presidential campaign and think that that is your starting point and where you're gonna get the most done. The more relationships that you have, that closer circle, is where you're actually gonna have the most influence and you're actually gonna be able to do the most good and then grow that circle, as opposed to immediately starting in DC. Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, and I would just add, you'll probably be surprised at how accessible your local council members are, your commissioners, and even your state reps, how few phone calls they get or visits and how, especially in the offseason when they're not in legislative session, how easy it is to just sit down with them for 30 minutes or an hour and just get to know them and let them know what things matter to you and how you think about issues. And if you become a good source of information, they will, they know it's good for them, they'll definitely rely on you, because they can't know everything and be everywhere at once.
Yeah. Yeah, so, how are you, are you encouraged? I know that you were hoping that we would be done by yesterday. I was hoping we would be done by yesterday.
Yeah.
Are you, are you looking forwards to figuring out what happens next week?
I mean, we always, I mean, we have to see how this ends. At this point, we're committed. We put, there's a sunk cost. We've like put so much time into this already.
Three live streams. Is this the best trilogy ever created or the worst trilogy ever created? It's neither. Those two titles go to Star Wars, unfortunately. We will be back, we will be back to tell you guys what happened, or to tell you what is happening, if something important is happening. But I really do feel like all of the energy, I'm trying to keep an eye on what's being discussed. I feel like all the energy is gone in Nashville and there's nothing left but misery and people are gonna try to just survive and try to do a lot more of the figuring stuff out behind closed doors, so it's not gonna be nearly as interesting to watch. I mean, Justin Jones will still be, he'll still be doing stuff, and Justin Pearson. And Gavin Newsom is in town. In fact, I believe that he has a fundraising gig tonight, so Gloria will be there, almost certainly.
Well, then we will have to end session at some point tonight, so everyone can go see Gavin Newsom.
This is one of the advantages of a Republican supermajority. They can just leave and the Republicans won't go and they'll still have a quorum, but it won't actually matter, because I think the main battle right now is the Speaker of the House versus the Senate. It isn't actually partisan, it isn't actually related to any particular issues, it's just stuff on their to-do list. That, that level of politics is in some ways the most brutal, the personal politics, sadly. So in the future, we may actually know what is going on behind those closed doors, but as soon as we know what is actually happening with session, we will let you know. And there will be one more final livestream addressing the special session at a date to be determined by the special session, and we will let you know. It will be the fourth chapter, the scouring of the Shire, I hope. But probably not. Probably it'll be a whimper instead of a bang. It will fizzle out and everybody will have hurt feelings. And the annoying thing is everybody will be frustrated with each other, as opposed to the governor who started this thing, and they'll be frustrated with each other as opposed to the protesters and the media that are making it as miserable as it is. That is something that I want us as a community to figure out how to do as well. When people put pressure on us and we get frustrated and we lash out at each other, we need to be a lot quicker at understanding that we need to get along better and forgive one another and that's something that we really need to work on as a community, too. I've been frustrated by seeing that, but I've also been a part of that. So in the tactical community, the gun community, the Second Amendment community, let's really think about some of the conflicts that we have and try to handle those in a much more mature way. And if that fails, then milkshakes. Milkshakes.
Milkshakes are always an option. No one can be mad about milkshakes, come on.
I mean, hey, it's, yeah. So thank you so much for watching this third and penultimate livestream. Thank you for helping us follow all of this stuff. And once again, you guys, yes, hit the like button, the subscribe button, the bell button, all the buttons. And thank you so much for contributing to this process. All of the political stuff that we have been trying to do behind the scenes, T-Rex has been able to do that because of your support. Either your support in following us on the internet or buying stuff from T-Rex. Buying stuff like that new and improved chest rig coming next week sometime, details to be revealed later. Have a great evening.